Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. It's March the 4th, 2014. We're here at City Hall at 604-116th West Bridge Street, Granbury, Texas. I will now call the City Council to order. I'd like to call upon Pastor Mary Carden with the Brazos Covenant Ministries to lead us in our invitation, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance, and also followed by the Texas Pledge. All rise, please.
The Lord gives wisdom. From His mouth comes understanding and knowledge. So Father, I just want to thank You here tonight that we welcome Your wisdom. Thank You and bless these good servants of our city. I thank You that You love our city and You love each person here. So Father, we ask You for wisdom to rule in this city, to oversee and to do Your will. And we just thank You for Your wisdom that You said You'd give us and never upbraid us for asking. Bless each person here and let these decisions be according to Your will. And we thank You for being here with us, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Follow me with the Pledge of Allegiance and the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And now the Texas flag. Honor of the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible. Folks, what a great weekend we had with the Independence Day celebration coming on. I think it was a success, and I was going to thank everybody out there that participated and got all your friends and neighbors out there. It was what I would call a successful one-day event. So, thank you very much for that. At this time, the City Council will have -- will conduct their open-mic. The City Council will provide an opportunity for citizens to present concerns or address issues that are not matters of consideration listed on a posted meeting agenda during the open-mic period. The rules are that one person wishing to address the City Council must first register with the City Secretary and provide the following information: the name, resident address, daytime telephone number, the subject matter to be presented. And only one person may approach the microphone at any given time, and only the person at the microphone, upon recognition by the presiding officer, will be allowed to speak for no more than three minutes unless otherwise directed by the presiding officers. Speakers must address their comments to the presiding officer rather than the individual City Council members or staff. And the speakers may file copies of their remarks or supporting information with the City Secretary, who will make the information available to the City Council and the City Manager if requested. The Council will be allowed to receive input or information for future agenda items, but will not be allowed to enter into any discussion. At this time, we will have our open-mic. We have one speaker tonight, Ms. Jean Kate. Jean, you up?
Yeah. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Councilman. I just wanted to come this evening to -- I'm sure you're already aware of the fact that after the last council meeting, when you graciously voted to proceed with Phase Two of the skate park, the park board did hold a meeting and decided that we wanted the whole thing. And to that end, we have contacted the skaters, asked them to start a skateboard association so that they can apply for a 501(c)(3), to apply for foundations, for grants, so that we can continue to -- with construction and to have the whole thing. We're not being greedy. We just want the best for Granbury, and we think that that would be. And we'd like to comment that a city without a skate park is a skate park. And we don't want that to happen. The businesses in our community have been very patient with our skateboarders. We just want the board to know that we will continue to try to raise the funds to complete the project, and we appreciate the support of the Council. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes our open-mic. At this time, we will go into the consent agenda, the first item being the approval of the Council minutes of the regular meeting of February the 18th, 2014, and the minutes of the special meeting of February the 25th, 2014. Council, you've had an opportunity to look over these minutes. Are there any changes or amendments to this? Any discussion? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes of February the 18th, 2014, and of the special meeting of February 25th, 2014. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
I have a motion by Councilman Couch. Do we have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Councilman Perkel. Is there any more discussion, Council? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Those minutes are approved. We will now move into the deliberation agenda, the first one being a public hearing regarding a request of Mitchell Milson of Granbury Motorsports to rezone from interim holding to heavy commercial lot 2R Block A of the courtyards at Lake Granbury Edition, being a 1.485 acre tract located at 853 Klinko Drive, and consider and approve an ordinance providing for this said rezoning. I'll also go ahead and discuss number two here, which they tie in together so that Scott can talk about both of them at the same time. It's also a public hearing regarding a request of Mitch Milson of -- for a specific use permit for the property located at 853 Klinko Drive to allow ATV, auto, boat, trailer, and RV storage, and consider an ordinance providing for the said SUP. Scott, would you like to talk a little bit about these SUPs?
Absolutely. Thank you, Mayor, Council, Mr. Manager. What we have is a request for an expansion of an existing business, Granbury Motorsports. You can see the current property that's located in the site just to the northeast of the area that's bounded in red. It's the heavy commercial site. Our ordinance requires motorsport, in essence, motorcycles, ATVs, and any kind of outside display and storage for that type of vehicle or equipment to be located in a heavy commercial zone with a specific use permit to allow for that outside activity. Business is robust. Obviously, they're looking at expansion of the business, which is a good sign for any business in Granbury. We like to see that. So what they're looking at is acquiring the property just to the south, as bordered in red, highlighted in green, zoned interim holding, to have the Council, the City Council, consider rezoning that to heavy commercial for an SUP for the expansion of their business. You may remember about a month ago, we saw plat for this, adjusting that common lot line between the courtyards and this particular piece of property for this title transaction in order to allow for this. This is the last step in the migration to allow for the expansion of the business as a part of the application. The applicant has provided a site plan of how the site will be laid out. You can again see the property just to the northeast of the site. That's the existing facility just to the site. South of that, you can see the area that's currently zoned interim holding, broken up into kind of a little fire lane swirl that's comprised of about 55% to 60% of the northern boundary of the site. So they're actually locating their inventory on the first phase of that to the north of the property, where you have somewhat of a buffer to the south. They're earmarking that as a second phase of development, but right now, the SUP and the site plan is tied to the SUP. We'll have the fire lane and the storage and the canopies for this inventory just to the northern portion of the property. As required by zoning ordinance as well, we do have screening requirements. Outside screening will be -- for the storage area will be that type of material that's shaded in red, located on the plot plan, and you can see the R-panel-type material located on Exhibit Five, which will traverse around the north, the east, and the west portion of the property. The more protected classification of the property, which is the residential to the south, has the more decorative fence, and that will be adjoining the courtyard area. And you can see that in Exhibit Number Four, just to the south. So that will be our double-sided decorative stockade fence with the stone columns located to the south. And of course, we'll have that area that's still a buffer area in Phase Two as kind of a distance between the development, between the courtyards, and the expansion. That's about the lot of it, Mr. Mayor. P&amp;Z and City staff recommend approval as presented, and P&amp;Z did vote unanimously to support both applications.
Thank you, Scott. I will now open the hearing up for the public hearing. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak on this matter? If not, we'll close the public hearing. Council, is there any discussion or concerns on this matter? If not, we'll go with the first one right here. I will entertain a motion to consider and approve the ordinance providing for this said rezoning. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
I have a motion by Councilman Couch. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Councilperson Myers. Is there any more discussion, Council? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That rezoning is approved. I will now entertain a motion to consider an ordinance providing for the said SUP for this same property. Do I have a motion?
So moved, Mayor.
I have a motion by Councilman Allen.
Second.
I have a second by Councilman Couch. Is there any more discussion, Council, on this issue? Not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That one is approved. Our next item in the deliberation is to consider and approve a contract with EZIQC Byboard LMC Corporation to rehabilitate the existing parking lot at the corner of Bluff and Crockett Streets. The total estimated project cost is $170,677.916. I'd like to call upon Alva Cox to go ahead and give us a little more information on this issue, please. Bear with him. He's still partially crippled.
I'll be out of breath before I get up here. Okay, thank you. Yes, this is actually -- this is back behind the Opera House, and actually what this is, we're doing the rehabilitation to actually both parking lots. We are going to have the price that we have, $170,000. This is just for the rehabilitation of the existing parking lot. This is not included far as in with the lighting or far as the landscape. Landscaping's separate. We're doing that, and we're actually doing the lights, too. What we're doing as well on the landscaping, can I give you a little bit on that one, is we are doing some zere-scaping on that. We're actually doing the drip irrigation on this as well, trying to, again, to be -- make sure we're drought tolerant with all of our plants and everything. So this is going to look really good. I didn't -- I don't think we had the pictures on this one. We do not, okay. Where I can show you a little bit what we're doing far as on the landscaping. Some of y'all may have seen some of the renderings that we were doing. Aaron McLean, our Park Superintendent, has been working with me on the plants, and he did a really, really good job on that so far, so I think y'all will be very happy with the --
There is a drawing in the package.
There is, okay. I was thinking I put one in there. I guess I just didn't put it on that. So if y'all want to kind of look at it and how it's set up and everything. Like I said, it's going to be a good project. This is a byboard quote is what this is, just kind of let y'all know. We do this from time to time. That's why you don't see where we went out for formal bids or sealed bids, and that's what this is. But the $170,000, it will not exceed for this parking lot. And like I said, it's going to be really nice. We're going to have it. We're going to be -- this is also part of the -- we're going to be putting the dumpsters in, putting them in enclosures back there as well, so we can cover those up. Like I said, it's going to look really nice.
Did you say that the $170,000 does not include the landscaping?
Does not include that. That is something separate. So just so y'all know that, so.
One of the questions I have on your landscaping, as I looked at it, are we leaning towards our -- I know we're going towards the Texas-style landscaping or the conservative, you know, to where we don't have to do a lot of watering and stuff, and I think this would be a good opportunity to set the bar for this kind of stuff. I mean --
Yes, sir. That's what we're doing, and that's why we're going with the drip irrigation and everything, trying to, again, you know, as we, I think all of us have talked about before, you know, it's hard to get the sprinkler heads in there, for one, without watering the whole parking lot and everything else. So with the drip irrigation, we can actually get the water to the plants that need it without wasting water and having it all over the parking lot. So yes, I think this is going to be a good thing there, too.
How many dumpster spaces are there?
There are two currently.
Two?
Yes, sir.
Will that be the city dumpsters that are billed by those tenants, or how is that?
I believe they are. I believe they are, the two. It's going to be exactly the way we have it now far as how we're billing with ASI, except for obviously we'll have the enclosures, but yes.
People on that side of the square.
Yes, sir.
What about on the east end of the Opera House there? Are we going to be doing anything there to clean that up a little bit, or what?
On the east side, yes, sir, far as on the crockett right there.
Yeah.
Where the dumpster is currently.
Yeah.
There's dumpster and stuff. Yes, sir. We'll be dressing that up as well.
And you said there's no electrical in there. Are we -- will we be taking that power line underground there, or is that still going to be sticking up there?
Currently, we are not taking that one underground just as yet, or we don't have any plans to do that one. We did on the other side, the one, actually, I guess that runs right through the middle of it. We've done that. However, the other side, we haven't yet.
And we're not looking to have a light post on that one.
No.
We were talking about having a light coming up from the ground onto the stone and so forth like that.
Yes, yes, far as what we're talking about is in the actual beds and stuff, we're actually going to have some lighting that's going to come up from that, that we'll have through there. We're looking at that right now, too, far as the lighting and everything. Then we'll have some traditional lighting on the, I guess, on the north side, northwest side of the parking lot. We'll have that as well, so that everything will be lit up. But yet, we're not causing issues for the neighbors or anything like that far as happening. You know, we thought maybe it was on the south side that might cause some problems for the neighbors, so we're just going to try it without it first and see what that looks like. And so, yeah, we'll have -- so the lighting will be, like I said, again, it'll be ground-oriented on the backside, or far as over towards the bluff side, and then, again, we'll have the traditional lights up on the other side.
But this bed doesn't talk about the lighting nor the landscaping, it's just --
No, sir. No, sir. We're doing that in-house.
Does it include the sidewalks and the --
This includes everything pretty much all the way from putting in some of the piping for us, for the irrigation and so forth, putting in the sleeves for the electrical, the water, far as on the sidewalks, actually putting in some of the stuff for as far as on the landscaping itself. And then some of it, again, we will be doing some of this ourselves, too, far as some of the rock work and things like that. We'll be doing some of that, too, as far as to help the price out.
Aaron had come up on this one, the landscaping.
He did. It was like $6,700 or $6,600, something like that.
Seven thousand dollars.
Probably talked close to 10 with the night lighting, I think.
Yeah, probably. Yeah, I think he did say that, yeah. I believe he did.
Yeah, but whenever I looked these plans with y'all, I didn't like where the dumpster deal was, and it's just my personal opinion.
Yes.
Men and women. But because it kind of gets in the middle of the flow of the traffic.
It does.
You were thinking about maybe trying to set it back on the left side of the Opera House there on --
Yes, sir. Still am.
That didn't work out?
I'm still working on that. I think it will work out, where we'll be able to kind of maneuver it over, because like we talked about, it's kind of when you're coming in, it's, to me, I mean, my personal opinion is it's kind of stuck out there, and the flow is just not there. So we're going to try to, what Councilman Allen's talking about is actually shifting those back into that corner, back where it's at, and actually kind of putting it level to where they can come off bluff with the truck and actually come straight in, pick it up, and come back out. So that's what I'm working on now, trying to get that taken care of, so we can --
That would move some of that onto another piece of property, and you have to get permission from them to do that.
I do have to have permission for that, yes, sir. Yes.
Does your bed include a concrete apron around the dumpsters?
I believe it does, Councilman Parsons, far as the rock work and all that as well. And we're going to go back with kind of the traditional stone work around it and all that, kind of like we did --
Those trucks pulling in there, you need a concrete apron, right? You don't want them on the asphalt.
It'll sink in if you don't, yes.
And we plan to use the rock from the Opera House, so, to build them.
Yes.
I didn't see anything about the concrete, and I read it quickly, but about the approach on that, it may be in here.
We're going to, again, we're going to be doing a lot of the stuff, too, setting this thing up for city forces. We're going to be doing some of this far as bringing in some of the base and things like that as well, again, to keep the price down. So, like I said, but we'll have it pretty much all knocked out.
In Section 03, it's talking about a concrete floor finish broom.
Correct.
That was for the -- where the dumpsters were going to sit.
Right.
But I don't think it had anything in there about the approach of that.
Correct, yeah. There will have to be one, as Councilman Parsons pointed out, because if not, you have all that front and weight, so when you start picking it up, basically, if you've ever seen some of these parking lots, they'll have huge ruts, and that's exactly what it is, where they come up to them, they lift the dumpsters up, and they sink down two to three feet, so, yes.
Alva.
Yes, sir.
When it comes to landscaping on the east end of the Opera House, do we have any plans for benches or anything? I think at some point, we discussed that. Maybe that was in committee. But I think we need something at the end there, so it's not just a blank.
Right. We can definitely look at it and kind of see. I don't think we had any of that in our plans, but I do remember we did talk about it at one time, far as possible having some benches or something back in there. But, I mean, we can look at some spots back there.
We weren't talking about building benches. We're just talking about buying benches, right?
I believe that's what we're talking about.
If they were going to be stationary, why wouldn't we just build them out of some of our existing rock and put some timbers across them?
We can probably do that, too. Hey, you probably do that. We haven't looked at it, but I mean, that's something we can --
That'd be more creative.
We can look at that.
When do y'all plan on this to start to finish?
I'm going to try to meet with the contractor probably next week, actually, myself and Chris Hayes, the engineer, which is sitting back there. We're going to look at it, or actually talk to him, and probably try to get a pre-construction set up here in the next week or so, and then from there, we can kind of get a good idea when he's going to come in and when he's going to be finished with it. We're going to try to get him in as quick as possible, but we have not really talked to the contractor yet to see kind of what his timetable is, unless Chris has. Has Chris? No.
Since it's not off, since it is off the byboard, we don't have to go out for bed.
Right. Well, yeah, correct. Getting the work off the --
Here's my concern, though. It's probably going to take a week to get the underground electrical and stuff ran across the parking lot before, in the water lanes.
We'll have to, yes, sir.
And I guarantee you, if we hadn't got them in the parking lot by the end of April, they'll have your cell number.
Yes, sir.
People around the square.
Yes, sir.
Do you think we can get it done by the end of April?
Chris, what do you --
Yeah, I was thinking about, like I said, we might get it into, maybe into May.
Could be May Day here, so you know.
But we probably, it'd be, I would say, yeah, it'd be pretty tight trying to get it by then. Again, depending on when they mobilize and so forth.
Into May, you'd say real safe.
It'd be a little bit, yeah, it'd be a safer assumption.
You say maybe?
Well, that would be safer, yes, sir. Again, depending on weather, depending on a lot of things, so you have to -- but hopefully by that time, yes.
When will you know if we can move the dumpster back on the side there?
Hopefully, either this week or next week, I'll know how we're going to shift that thing back there.
Council, any more questions for Alva? Thank you, Alva. Council, is there any more discussion on this issue or comments? If not, I'll entertain a motion to consider and approve the contract with EZIQC Byboard LMC Corp. to rehabilitate the existing parking lot at the corner of Bluff and Crockett Streets. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
I have a motion by Councilman Parsons, I believe.
Second.
I have a second by Councilman Couch. Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That is approved. Our next item is to consider and approve a public improvement agreement with Tri-County Development for Water and Wastewater Improvements and for a lift station retrofit to support the Emerald Glen Meander Estates complex duplexes addition. Alva, you stayed right up there. You didn't want to go --
I did, I did.
You can speak on that one, too.
Take me too long, get back there, move back. Yes, sir. Let me give you a little background on this. We've been working on this for a while. It actually, and I don't know if you have a picture in the packet, there you go. This actually sits outside the city limits, and it actually sits outside of the ETJ, so it's a little bit different animal that we normally deal with. But however, they're still in our CCN, so they're our water/wastewater territory, so they still have to abide by the water and wastewater rules that we have far as in place for the specifications and things like that. So just kind of give you all a little bit of a, you know, a little bit of background. Again, we've been working on this for, actually, about over a year or so. Like I said, we had ourselves, and Freezy Nichols. We did review the plans, and we did approve the plans, far as myself and the city engineer, Freezy Nichols, Justin, which is, he's sitting back here. So far as everything, they actually, they already put up their inspection fees. They've already paid them in advance. They paid all the engineering fees up front, and we did receive, we was checking today, Sturt, myself, far as making sure that they had the proper sureties. We did get the email from their insurance company to make sure that this is what we were wanting on that, far as to make sure that it did comply with the PIA. But this is kind of, like I said, this is a little bit different animal. Most time, it's either going to be in the city limits, obviously, when we do this with the PIA's, or it's going to be in the ETJ, and this one is just barely outside of it. And actually, where this is located is on Meander Road. Meander, like going up to the back gate of Bentwater, it's actually where this is sitting at, and right across from the, I believe that's Quarterstone School, I think is what that is right there, as you go by. So anyways, it's a little bit different animal. However, they did, like I said, they've, the other thing that they're going to do is they're actually buying a generator for the existing lift station that's on Highway Bay Court to help us there, too. So basically, it's going to be set up. It'll be permanent fixture right there. That's how it's going to be, too. So basically, this is all part of the PIA.
Thank you, Alva. Council, is there any questions for Alva?
You're going to have an emergency generator, is that --
Councilman Parsons. Council, please stay within the preliminary procedures here so that I can identify you, so the recording secretary knows who's speaking over there, please. Councilman Parsons?
Thank you, Mayor. So you're going to have an emergency generator?
Yes, sir.
And are we going to have to move our lift station, or just improve it?
Basically, it'll just improve it. I mean, basically, what they're going to do is just put the actual generator on-site itself, so actually, in the control panel is what will be installed, and that'll be it. And basically, what that'll allow us to do is if, obviously, if we have any incidents where we don't have power out there, it automatically will kick on. You'll have an automatic switchgear kicks on the generator to keep that. As you well know, this is all growing over in this area, and so with that lift station right there, it takes on all of Meander, Phase One, Two, and Three. So you have several hundred homes out there that come to it, and even with their addition, as you can see outlined here, it's going to add another substantial amount to the lift station. So obviously, we want to make sure we have plenty of time to get out there, because normally what you want is you want to have about two hours detention time, so our crews can make it out there before any overflows or anything like that. So with the generator, it'll make it a little bit easier for us.
As I recall, the people that did the Meander Estates built their own sewer line out there, right, from our service?
Yes, sir. They sure did. 377. They did. They did a long time ago.
Is this the existing sewer line there, does it have a lot of room for capacity otherwise, other than just, what do we call this, Emerald Glen, or is there, or would we have to upsize that for adding on other developments in there?
I think if we add too many more, yes, we would have to upgrade the lines if we keep going.
Do we have that, do we have that Meander Estates permission to do that? I mean, we on the line now.
We on the line, so it is ours at this point in time, so we can, you know, if we need to upsize it at any given time, we could do that.
No more questions, Mayor. Perkel?
I have one, Mayor.
I have one, Mayor.
Councilman Allen?
They're paying for the, everything, right?
Yes, sir. And they're paying for our, also the inspection fees for our inspectors to go out there as well. And necessarily been paid upfront, too.
I drove out there over the weekend. And they already got streets in out there, some of the streets?
They do, they do. And on that note, the county, actually, they've gone to the county for approval as well far as for the, the streets and the drainage, just kind of let y'all know that as well. So that was separate from...
We have nothing to do with that, correct?
No, sir.
Okay. Beautiful view out there.
Any more questions for Alva, Council? Thank you, Alva. I think you can go sit down now.